Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, December 15th, and we are having our Moscow City Regular Council meeting this evening. We've got a nice room full of folks. Welcome, everybody. We will start it off. Tom, you want to lead us?
Sure, absolutely. I'm honored. Please lead.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. The next item that will come up will be the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we pass the Consent Agenda as presented.
I'll second it. Okay, Walter made a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, seconded by Dan. We'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, and we will move forward to the next thing, which is mayoral appointments, and I have got a bunch of them tonight, folks. I've got 24 reappointments. I may have to have a shot of water in between talking about all these. I'll start off first with that, and I'll go right down the list before I ask for an approval from the council. And I'll start off with the Board of Adjustment. Joe Bizzoli, expiration to term to go to 12/31/2019. Marshall Comstock, Board of Adjustment, term to expire 12/31/2019. Mark Munson, Board of Adjustment, term to expire 12/31/2019. Lloyd Bonner, on Fair and Affordable Housing Commission, term to expire 12/31/2017. David Pierce, the Farmers Market Commission, and this is a member-at-large for David, expiration 12/31/2017. Cindy Williams, Farmers Market Commission, and this is the U of I extension position to expire 12/31/2017. Wendy McClure, Historic Preservation Commission, term to expire 12/31/2017. Pamela Overholster, Historic Preservation Commission, term to expire 12/31/2017. Clay Rayland, Historic Preservation Commission, and this is the college seat, term to expire 12/31/2015. Ken Fontz, Human Rights Commission, to expire 12/31/2017. Rebecca Talent, Human Rights Commission, term to expire 12/31/2017. Iris Mays, Moscow Arts Commission, term to expire 12/31/2018. Donna Woolston, Moscow Arts Commission, term to expire 12/31/2018. Justin Minden, Parks and Recreation Commission, term to expire 12/31/2016. Susan Steele, Parks and Recreation Commission, term to expire 12/31/2017. Kurt Obermeyer, Planning and Zoning, and this is the area city impact representative, term to expire 12/31/2019. Caleb Baker, Sustainable Environment Commission, this is a college seat, term to expire 12/31/2015. Andy Boyd, Sustainable Environment Commission, term to expire 12/31/2016. Scott Fidel, Sustainable Environment Commission, term to expire 12/31/2016. Luke Miller, Sustainable Environment Commission, and this is a non-voting high school seat, term to expire 12/31/2015. Mike McGann, Transportation Commission, term to expire 12/31/2019. Nancy Nelson, Transportation Commission, term to expire 12/31/2019. Nils Peterson, Tree Commission, term to expire 12/31/2016. And David Rock, Tree Commission, term to expire 12/31/2016. Geez, I think I did out okay with that. Cracking up. So, cracking my voice. I would like a confirmation from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to accept the list of reappointments and reappointees to the commissions that you just read.
Second that.
Okay, Walter made a motion to approve, and with Tom seconding it, all these appointments that I just named, I'll do the roll, starting with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that is six to nothing. Thank you very much. For all the appointees out there, would you please stand so we could all recognize you? There's a bunch of them out here in the crowd. Please stand up. We want to give you a round of applause. Thank you so very much, and one of the reasons I love to do that was I was on a commission for a number of years here for the city, and, you know, if citizens get out and they work hard and they take their time, and they're on the various commissions, then it's a big deal for our community, and we've got lots of terrific community involvement in this community, and I just want everybody to know my appreciation and my deep thanks for that, so, thank you all very much. Okay, the next thing I will talk about will be Service Commissions Awards, and I'm going to go to the podium, Gary, when I do this. We have three of these this evening that I would like to talk about. Whoops, I did something. How do you shut this thing off? I don't want to distract, I don't want to distract folks from my presentations. Pay attention. Go up there and hit that. I'm not going to close the city down by doing this, am I? All right. Okay, I think we're good. Okay, the first commission, and this has to do with Paradise Path Task Force, and I got a letter from both Margaret Dibble and Karen Clifford, and I'm not going to read the entire letter, but the nominee was Margaret Littlejohn. And one pair, one phrase in here that I would like to read to the whole group is called, "Margaret is the kind of leader every team needs: easygoing, kind, smart, creative, dependable, and patient. Her ego never gets in the way of working out solutions." And I thought that was key, so, with that, I would like to present this award. Karen, you want to come up? You and Margaret to receive this?
Well, we might have outsmarted ourselves here.
Come on up, come on up.
We don't have Margaret Littlejohn here.
You don't?
No, we don't.
Well, maybe we can phone show her.
We were trying to surprise her, and, um...
And she's not here.
No, she's not.
Are you surprised us? Well, this is, I'm going to let you guys get this here. This is her award, and she's got, we got to give it to her, but...
She's coming.
So, we'll look at her. If she shows up, we'll spring it on her.
Yeah, we'll rerun it.
But she comes in before the closing, so we'll stop, and we'll redo this. I was just going to give this to you guys. Thank you very much. Okay, the second commission, this has to do with the human rights. This was a letter received from Ken Fontz, and David Duke is the staff liaison to this, and this has to do with Rebecca Talent. And one of the areas that I want to read out of the letter that Ken so graciously wrote was, "There is no doubt in my mind that the Human Rights Commission work has been greatly influenced by Rebecca Talent, and that we would not have been as active without her participation," and that was key to that participation. So, with that, do we have Rebecca here this evening? Would you please come up? Ken, you want to come up? Thank you. Now, the third award, Nils Reith is the chair of the Historic Commission here, and Michael Ray, is Mike here too? Yes, he is as well. He was the staff liaison, and this award goes to Wendy McClure, and I guess she is not here with us this evening, and so I'm going to read an excerpt of that as well on this commission that she has served on. Wendy's been one of the original members of the, of this commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, and she started with, actually, in 1991, so she's got quite a few years with us on this, and I think that is something that's very notable. It's almost 24 years that she's been doing this. Anyway, this letter that Nils wrote, one of the sentences is, "Wendy has recruited many University of Idaho students to serve on the commission and maintain contact with U of I graduates who have gone on to practice historically sensitive architects in other cities." And I thought that was an interesting thing that Nils wrote, because it started here and is passed on with the kids that go to school here, and I think that's a big deal. So, Nils, would you please come up and accept this? And Michael Ray, you want to come up too? You're the staff liaison.
Wendy is a traveling fool now that she's retired, so, see who you have to do or work for. Well, I can't think of anybody better than Nils, so I shouldn't be here in this picture coming up with a hand in front of it.
Oh, you make me look young, Nelson.
I'll touch you up now.
The only reason I said that was got in the hall, had a little conversation.
I accuse you of being a growing boy.
And that, could I, let's give a round of applause to all the folks that were here that... Yep. Yes. Okay, well, folks, I'm going to share something with you. Margaret Littlejohn is going to be down here in a few minutes, and so we are going to present this award to her when she gets here, but we're going to go on to the next order of business, and I'm going to come down here, and Margaret will not know the difference that we've done this or not, so how's that? Karen, I'll let you and Margaret give me the high, so we can get her in here, okay?
That's called transparency in government, right?
Well... And once she watches the video, she'll know what happened.
We've got the Ls working with us tonight. It's close to Christmas, only 10 days away. We'll move on to the next thing, and this is a public comment and mayor's response period for 15 minutes, so that anybody would like to get up and speak to us, they certainly may. Come on up, Kenton, and put your, even though I know who you are, Kenton, and everybody up here, please state your name and address, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the audience. My name is Kenton Byrd. I live at 517 East B in Moscow, and I'm here to express my appreciation to one of your members, Councilmember Tom Lamar, who will be completing his term on the council in just a few weeks. I understand that he will make a ceremonial appearance at the January 5th, 2015, meeting, but this is the last meeting where he will be as an active voting, participating, and discussing council member. So I thought it appropriate that his time on the council be recognized. I know you, as mayor, and your fellow council members are familiar with Tom's contributions to Moscow, but members of the audience and those watching at home tonight may not be, so please allow me just a few minutes to express my appreciation. Some of you who have been around Moscow for a long time know that I began my career as a cub reporter for the Idahoanian, and I covered my first meeting of the Moscow City Council in November of 1975, so I was about eight years old at the time. I have seen a lot of council members come and go over the past 39 years, and Tom Lamar ranks right up there in the top 1 percent. I was Tom's campaign treasurer for his initial campaign in 2007, and for his reelection campaign in 2011, and I managed to avoid being the campaign treasurer for his race for county commissioner this past year. But I would like to note three things that I think have distinguished Tom's time on the council. First is his ability to connect with Moskowans of all ages, all backgrounds, all interests. He is equally at home visiting an elementary school as he is visiting with our senior residents at Good Samaritan Village. He's comfortable on Main Street, on campus, and is able to make these connections across the wide range of Moscow residents. Second, he has a passion for the quality of life of this community, and that has been demonstrated by his commitment to the community in his own work at Palouse Clearwater Environmental Institute, in his, the last nearly seven years as a member of the city council, and now moving up the hill in January to begin a term as a county commissioner. So, I wanted to say publicly to the council, you'll have a hard time filling his shoes, but I'm very grateful for Tom's time, and just wanted to publicly say thank you.
Thank you, Kenton.
Thanks, Kenton.
Usually the mayor does come on, comment on some of these things, but I'm going to let Tom comment for just a second here before we get to the next one, Tom.
I, well, I might choke up if I...
Well, you're going to be around to the next one.
No, but it's, it's, well, thanks, Kenton. I really appreciate it. I, I've had a lot of fun working with the city and have made lots of friends among the staff and among the council and the mayors, and it's been terrific to be here, and I look forward to continuing to work with, with all of those people, but in a different role, so I'm excited about the change, but I'm also sad about leaving my work at the city. It's been really terrific, and I really appreciate all the support I've received from, from all levels of people within the city of Moscow. It's been, it's been great. Thank you so much.
Okay, we've got some other folks that would like to come up during this public comment and speak before I go on to the next thing of action. Seeing nobody rush up, I'll go ahead and close that, and then I'm going to go to mayoral appointments. Service Commission. Art. Excuse me, Service Commissions. Thank you, Dan.
This is why a mayor has councils, so they can correct. You want someone else to get it straight.
Okay. It is my pleasure, we have a lady here from the Paradise Task Force. A letter was sent in by Margaret Dibble and Karen Clifford, and this is on Margaret Littlejohn. And there is a couple of sentences that really caught my eye on this letter that was wrote by these two ladies, and I'll just read it again here for you folks. It says, "Margaret is the kind of leader every team needs: easygoing, kind, smart, creative, dependable, and patient. Her ego never gets in the way of working out solutions." Now, isn't that exactly what we're looking for in everybody needed by? So, Margaret, if you would please come up here.
Karen, with you and...
The whole committee out there.
If you're lucky, go for it.
One more. One more time. Okay, we're going to move on now, folks, and the next thing in order is a confirmation of the person to fill Tom Lamar's term as councillor, to be sworn in on January the 15th, and the mayor is looking for a confirmation of Jim Boland.
It would be my pleasure and honor to approve the mayor's appointment of Jim Boland to fill my seat.
Second that. Okay, Tom Lamar made a motion to approve Jim Boland's confirmation as council member to be sworn in on January 5th, and John, second, is there a...
You need an effective date on the appointment. You can't have seven members on the council.
Oh, well, that would be more fun, wouldn't it? We could have a lot more fun with effective January 5th, 2015. Picky, picky, Gary.
All right.
Folks, that's why we have staff there also.
A rugby team.
Well, nevertheless, we have a motion by Tom and a second by John to confirm Jim Boland effective January the 5th, and I will start the roll with Art.
Aye. Absolutely. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You bet.
Okay, Jim, we got you six to zero. Jim, would you like to step to the podium and say a few words, please, sir?
Jim Boland, 910 North Allyn, Moscow, Idaho. I'd like to say that I'm deeply honored to have been asked to do this, and I'll try very hard to live up to the standards set by Mr. Lamar, because he's done a fabulous job, and make Kenton not ashamed of me. Do you have any questions for me? If you'd like to change your mind, maybe?
Too late.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Well, you know, so I got to share this little story. Selecting Jim was on my very short list, and he was my first person I wanted to talk to about it, and the reason I did that is because I knew Jim for many, many years, and Jim has been a person here in Moscow who's always been concerned with things that have gone on for years and years. I'm not going to say how many years, Jim, I won't admit it for both of us, but what he'll do is he'll put the interest of Moscow in front of his own interests, and that's what I like to look for in anybody that's a councillor or somebody that's a leader within our community, because that's a big deal, and Jim has got excellent analytical skills and looks through all different ends of it, and he's a very easy guy to talk to. Witty, sharp, smart, and of course, his brother-in-law has helped him through life, Thalia, who I've known for many years as well. But anyway, I think Jim's going to make a terrific addition to this council up here and a fine replacement for Tom. Tom can't be replaced, because Tom is Tom, and, you know, you have six, well, listen, you've got six councillors, and each one of us up here are individuals, and so you can't find just necessarily a perfect fit, but that's the neat thing about Moscow, you need to find the perfect fit, you need to find the right person that can fit in and work through all the issues and come up with solutions and good ideas, and so I think Jim Boland is the perfect candidate for that, so, look forward to it, Jim. We'll see you next time. Okay, well, folks, with that, we'll go to reports. I'll start with Walter.
Thank you, sir. The things that we had on the Public Works Finance Committee last Monday have been handled. I have a couple of other things to mention since I have the floor. I'll let the mayor talk about his trip down, but I went down to Bozey on Friday, the 5th of December, for the Association of Idaho Cities Legislative Committee meeting. It was a nine-to-one, pretty much on-time meeting, which was primarily a report to the members about various and sundry legislation that we may see, starting in January with the state legislature when they convene. Got us up to date and up to speed on several things that are in the wind. I won't go into any detail, because who knows if he'll come up for sure or what'll happen to him, but we'll save that for the press to explain to us. On Monday night, the 8th, I attended the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department Regular Monthly Board Meeting, and then on the night of the 9th, was pleased to attend Lawrence Waston, the Attorney General's presentation on the open meetings law and on other aspects that really affect the city and the counties of the state regarding disclosure. So, it was an entertaining and worthwhile event that we participated in, and then on the 12th, on Friday, I got to be one of the two judges of the chili cook-off between the city and the county, and I'm very pleased to say that the county won, but that's okay. It's all right, but good time was had by all, and the chili wasn't bad either. That's all I've got, mayor.
Okay, I'll go to Wayne.
Three meetings last week, actually. On Wednesday, the Farmers Market Commission met, and they continue to move forward with the planning of next year's market. They're particularly looking at some of the larger music groups right now and trying to get them scheduled. The market then voted to send a letter of support to Backyard Harvest for their effort for federal grants for the SNAP program, and the commission is continuing to work on various market policies and other various changes that they may feel is necessary to make, and then they'll, of course, bring those to council for confirmation. On Thursday, the Palouse Knowledge Corridor met at the airport, and they had discussion on future officers for the coming year. Financials for Palouse Knowledge Corridor are pretty good with the Be the Entrepreneur balances, which is a separate account. That's actually in pretty good shape. They have a total of over $30,000 between the two of them right now, so they're financially sitting in pretty good shape. There's a discussion on future Palouse Knowledge Corridor awards, various categories, as well as nonprofit versus profits, and then applications will be made, will be online February 1st, and that will close on April 1st. Also, there is a discussion on having a nonprofit business showcase. Now, as you may recall, PKC does a business showcase twice a year, one in Moscow, and then they'll do another one in Pullman, and they're talking about maybe doing a third one, which would be for nonprofits, to showcase what they're doing, so that might be kind of interesting also. In fact, the next business showcase is going to be April 9th at the Bell Tower from 2:00 to 5:00 in Pullman, and just so you can put it on your calendars, the next Be the Entrepreneur Boot Camp is scheduled for June 14th through the 18th. And then that afternoon, the Historical Preservation Commission met, and Margaret Littlejohn was representing the Tree Commission, and she's a busy lady. She presented a Heritage Trees Program, which would highlight some of Moscow's signature trees, such as white oak, black locust, white pine, et cetera. It's kind of interesting, because we drive around town, we walk around town, we see trees, and we go, yeah, these are some pretty nice trees, but there are some very unique trees. For instance, a white oak. It's in excellent health, it's large, and there's not a lot of white oak, a lot of red oak, so that's going to be interesting. There's a lot of discussion on heritage homes that qualify or may not qualify because of various remodel projects, and this is for the expansion of the Fort Russell District, and why some homes will qualify and why some homes won't qualify. Our Preservation Commission is extremely active in the standards that they're putting forward as far as, will these heritage homes qualify? The problem becomes that as these homes, which may be 100 years old and have been remodeled, have they been remodeled out of context, or have they been remodeled to keep the same heritage look? So, there's some issues that are going on there that we look forward to seeing, and I guess that's it.
Okay, Art.
Yeah, the Sustainable Environment Commission meets tomorrow, so I don't have anything new from them. Paradise Path Task Force met last week, and they've been working toward achieving commission status, and they've worked with the Parks and Rec and passed through there with a thumbs up towards commission status, and are in the process of contemplating asking for a renaming to call themselves the Moscow Pathways Commission when they get there, to differentiate from just the Paradise Path, but just make it Pathways more in general. Other issues coming up, working still with the Endercross at White Avenue, Steiner, and Highway 8, and are very pleased with the progress that's been made courtesy of city staff, primarily with the studies revolving around that issue, and putting on springtime cleanups at some of the parks along the Paradise Path along the way. Urban Renewal Agency is proceeding along with various discussions with the city about the Sixth and Jackson Lot and right-turn lanes and through lanes to realign that intersection and to facilitate the redevelopment of that corner lot that's going on there, so progress there as well. So, other than that...
Yeah, what's something you want to stick in here, Wayne?
If you've done, I just had one sub-note to my talk about the heritage trees. I mentioned the white oak. If you take a look at these chambers, at all the wood around the walls, this is all white oak. So, take a look at the... So, take a look at the grain, it's extremely unique.
Thank you, Wayne. Were you done? You were done, aren't you? Okay, I'm gonna go to you, Dan.
I had on the second was the Tree Commission, which I missed, but they, as Wayne mentioned, they've been talking about the heritage trees, and they're working towards the, getting some interviews by some UI students, and the Society of Municipal Art Bruce Workshop and Partners in Community Forestry Conference highlights were given by Tom Grenden at that meeting. And there's all, they're also working on their objectives for the committee, and as always, they're working up, ramping up for Arbor Day, which will happen again this spring. And then on the ninth was the Arts Commission, which they, one of the more interesting things coming out of that here in the near future is the, working on getting a poet laureate for the city of Moscow. So, all you poets out there, pay attention and get ready for the, the Call for Artists, I guess would be the, what that'll be called. In between those, on the fifth was the Thirty 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 Sale up here in City Hall. I had this really good big speech about art history, but everyone was anxious for me to ring the bell to start the sale, so that's, that was pretty much my only job that day. And it looked, sounded like everybody had a good time and got a lot of, got a lot of art sold that day. Everybody got a lot of Christmas shopping done. On the sixth, most of us up here made it to the Fire Department banquet out at the Best Western, which, you know, I think a good time was had by all with that. My favorite paramedic got EMT of the Year again this year, so she's not real thrilled about the recognition, she just wants to do the job, so...
How's your wife, Dan?
She's well. And other than that, that's, that's all I got.
We'll go to John. I'm gonna save Tom for the last. He'll get the last word.
I had a planning and zoning meeting last week, and P&amp;Z voted to accept the Alternative Front Yard Setback Amendment, so that will be coming to the council, I think, the first part of next month. And other than that, they reviewed the ADU, the additional...
Accessory development unit?
Development, for lack of a better word, a grandmother apartment. And there was four different surveys that had gone out in a period of time, and all of the information that came back from those was presented and discussed. There were some parking discussions and whether or not to use the CUPs, and these things, it'll come back in January, and they will be discussed again. And the next item of importance was a review of the light manufacturing districts and the things that make up light manufacturing versus general business versus heavy manufacturing. And a few small changes were suggested, and they will also be back in January with that and will probably end up in front of this body sometime in January or February. And then also went to the Chodo Meeting for Moscow's Affordable Housing Trust, and more than anything else, it was a meeting that dealt with taking care of just the nuts and bolts of the organization. No big decisions were made. We are still looking for some property that we could get a hold of and start some affordable housing. We have been given some money by the city, we've been given some private money, and we've also been given some money by Idaho Housing. And so, with the use of all of those, we are hoping to move forward with that project and hopefully get something started to be built in the foreseeable future. Other than that, I'm meeting with the Human Rights is tomorrow.
Okay, Tom, the floor is yours.
Okay, we had two decision-making items on the Administrative Committee this week, and both of those items came forward on the Consent Agenda tonight and were passed. We had four reports, one on temporary business use by Mike Ray. We've seen a few possible examples of temporary business use in Moscow, and we're looking at figuring out ways to make it work so that there's some standardization of what expectations are and where things might happen and how things might happen that would give perhaps better and safer egress for getting in and out of those temporary businesses. Met, several examples were given last Monday. We also had a presentation by some folks from the university on the Smoke-Free Campus Proposal that's moving through the University of Idaho and how that might move forward and how that might interface with the city of Moscow.
I think that was Tobacco-Free Campus.
What did I say?
Smoke-free.
Oh, that's what the agenda says, so that's what I'm looking at. But you're right, I think that they're looking more at Tobacco-Free, not just Smoke-free. We also had a presentation about the Celebrate Wilderness. We have some little cards up here, bookmarks. I guess I didn't even have a chance to go. It was taking place during October and November, and I was a little bit distracted at that point, so I didn't have a chance to go. But it was Moscow Arts Commission, the Idaho Humanities Council, Leitau County Library District, among other sponsors for that. And then finally, a really great presentation on Moscow Farmers Market Volunteers, including Walter as one of those volunteers this year. We were also amazed at some of the volunteers that dressed up as vegetables.
What were you?
You weren't dressed up as a vegetable, were you?
I was not.
You know, that, we, next year, next year, we'll get you in a...
Look forward to it.
A carrot outfit or something. And then the commissions that I attended this past week, let's see, there was Parks and Rec Commission looking, probably the big topic was the proposal by the Paradise Path Task Force to become a permanent commission of the city, and that was well-received by the commission there, or the Parks and Rec Commission. The Fair and Affordable Housing Commission had an excellent workshop inviting other city commissions and some, a couple of state agencies to talk about what might happen with Saringa if it were to close down, and we now know that that's moving along at a faster clip. So, we'll see how that shakes out in the future in terms of affecting people's housing options. And I think that was the last set of commission meetings, or volunteer committee meetings that I attended. Also, I attended the open, the public meeting, open public meeting training with the Attorney General, and had a nice time at the Fire Department banquet as well. So, it's a busy week.
It was.
It was. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom. Well, on December fourth and fifth, I was down at Boise for AIC Association of Idaho Cities, representing on the board District Two, which is from Greenville up to almost Plummer somewhere. And on the fifth, as Walter was there too, we had legislative things that we went and reviewed, so hopefully some things can get done this winter with our legislators to help alleviate some of the issues we have with streets and some of the common sense things that we need to work on as a state, infrastructure, bridges, so on and so forth. And so, I'm actually kind of excited about it because I think we might make some progress in some areas, and I think that's a big deal for us. So, hopefully, we'll see, and we'll be having another AIC that we'll be headed to at the end of December, so some of the councillors I know will be going down for that as well.
End of January.
End of January. What did I say, December?
December.
Sorry about that. January, folks. The sixth, December sixth, I also, I went to the fireman, Fire Department banquet, which was very nice, held out at the Best Western, and that was a lot of fun, and it was exciting, and a number of awards and yearly awards for various years, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and one thirty, I think, as well, if I remember right. But that was a pretty nice event. And one, something I want to share, I've got an airport board meeting Friday, and one of the neat things, we just found out this week, one of the things that Idaho and Washington was working on together was to try to lower the match for the grants that we're getting, and it went through the House and passed, and now it went through the Senate and passed, and the difference is, is all we need to do now is have the signature from the President of the United States, and we're looking forward to that happening. And that's tacked on with some other things. The neat thing about this is, if this goes through and it looks really, really good, instead of having a ten percent match, it'll be an eight-point-one-two-five, and what that's gonna do is save the city of Moscow and the city of Pullman about two million bucks by the time this thing is done, and that's a big deal for us. And I gotta share with you, it was a collective job between Senator Murray, who's a Democrat from Washington, and Senator Crepeau, Republican from Idaho, and they worked together bipartisanly, so there is some of those things that don't happen in this country, but that's a big deal for us, for two different states working together to get something happen so that affects a region. And so, that's a pretty neat thing for us, and I just wanted to share that information with everybody out there because I think that's a big deal. You know, it's awful easy to complain that things don't get done, and something, and we all know how that is back in Washington, DC, but this is something that's gonna help our community in a big way and our region in a big way, and so, that's a big deal. So, if you ever get a chance to see a senator or talk to a senator, it's kudos to them for moving this thing forward. Gary, do you have any...
Just a couple of announcements. We have our annual holiday potluck this Friday from eleven-thirty to one-thirty, so city hall offices will be closed for that period of time for that celebration. Also, because Christmas falls on Thursday and Friday, typically nothing goes on the day after Christmas, city offices will be closed from noon on Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth, until the following Monday. So, staff will be utilizing their paid time off for that Friday, but since there were so many requests to take the time off, it seemed more prudent and discussed with the mayor and council president that that offices will be closed during that time. The offices of the city will be open the day after New Year's, business as usual on that day. So, just if you're, got some business to do with the city, I want to make sure you can get it done the first couple of days and next week.
I just wanted to point out that the mayor really made us proud this week when he won musical chairs. Right here in the middle of this floor.
At the chili tasting.
At the chili tasting.
County won, but the city won the musical chair.
City won the musical chairs with, with our athlete and mayor, Bill Lambert.
Anything else, Gary?
No, sir.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
Dan made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Tom. All in favor, say aye. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We'll see you next year, folks. This meeting is adjourned.